It's good evening, six o'clock. I'm gonna call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of September 7th, 2023 to order. Can we begin with roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Hector Garcia.
Present.
Rolando Casaros.
Present.
Mike Barone.
Present.
Manuel Rangel.
Present.
Johnny Narvai.
Present.
Yuxin Wang. Regina Portillo. Daniela Salapaz. Mr. Chairman, for the record, you do have form.
Thank you.
Motion to excuse the people that are asked.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Let's stand for the Fedenlegions facing against the wall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on, to consider approval of minutes for the regular meeting of August 17th, 2023.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to citizen comments.
No one has signed up.
Thank you. I'm gonna open up the public hearing if I can have a motion to move up the consideration of the following final plats and final replats, items eight to here, items eight, A, B, C together.
Motion to move it up.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. For the record, Commissioner, if you have a show. Can I have a motion of action for items eight A through eight C?
Motion to accept.
Have a motion for approval? Second?
Second.
Right. Motion ahead?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
What we can do is we could read them in for the record?
Yes.
As approval?
Yes, for the record, the final plat's being approved. First is Sierra Ranch Town Homes approved. Plaid of Lot Two, Block 15, Alexander Commercial Subdivision, Phase 15, approved. And lastly, Lot Two, Block One, the Cove at Winfield Commercial Unit Two, approved.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. We're now gonna go ahead and move to the public hearing and recommendations of an ordinance, item 68. Amending the zoning ordinance map of the city of Laredo by repealing ordinance 2011-0-043, which authorized a conditional use permit for a roofing company and authorized the issuance of conditional use permit for cleaning service on lots one and two, Block 1537 Eastern Division, located at 2601 East Ash Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Juan Frotas owner, we have Joseph Worshing as applicant, and Cornerstone Land Use Consultant as representative. Property location, Lot One and Two, Block 1537 Eastern Division, located at 2601 East Ash Street. Zone change request is a conditional use permit for a cleaning service. Proposed use is a cleaning service, letter sent for 35, and we have one against and none for. Background, we have ordinance 2011-0-043, which was a condition use permit for a roofing company that was approved by City Council on April 4th, 2011. However, this ordinance for the roofing company will be repealed. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Zone change signage. Zoning map. Feature land use map. And the recommendation is staff support. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this item, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Danny Tejirina for the record, and I'm here to speak in favor of this item. In addition, the Worshing families here who own Servpro, and they're also here to answer any questions, concerns, or talk about their business operations.
Are there any questions from the commission for staff or for the applicant?
Yeah, I've got some questions. In the letter that was submitted to us, it says that there are 11 employees. Will those 11 employees be reporting here to work in at this location, or?
They will be reporting to work at this location. It's 11 employees and then me and Sandra.
As far as, can you just mention your name for the record?
For the record, Joseph Worshing III.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm just trying to get familiar with what possibly could potentially be utilized as far as the warehouse, right? So I did read that there is 11 employees, and the hours would be 8:30 to 5:30. And I know it mentions that as far as the letter that was submitted by Mr. Tejirina that you all are requesting the conditioning use permit, and that the goal is to operate the business with a standard office. And I believe there's two offices in the front, right, or an office in the front? And then with some warehouse space that will house vans and restoration equipment.
Correct.
Is what it states. So yeah, I was just kind of trying to get an idea of what that would be. Like, would they come in at 8:30 and then leave?
Primarily come in at 8:30, leave at 5:30, and us sometime in between that.
Would you know what would be potentially stored at the warehouse, like?
Primarily drying equipment, I guess you could say, air movers, dehumidifiers, air scrubbers. We do have household cleaning chemicals that are primarily, we do purchase them in one gallon containers, something similar, we buy them from corporate in Tennessee, we're contractually obligated to do that. And that's essentially it. Our vehicles will be stored there on site and inside. Other than that.
Would there be no space within the warehouse to park?
Yes.
These 11 vehicle, or, because I don't know how much parking is in the front of it.
Yes, currently we're in a 10,000 square foot building, and we all fit, including the work vehicles. Very, so that's why this is a little bit more, this is approximately 15,000 square feet of warehouse plus office. So it should be more than sufficient.
Okay, perhaps more questions for staff, but I'll wait for that.
Do you all have another location?
I'm sorry, this, oh, no, we're, as far as our franchise, we're locally owned, this is our only location. Nationwide, I think we're, including Canada, there's 2,000 locations.
And most of the 2,000 locations are in a warehouse M1 area, then a neighborhood. So that's a problem I have, that this, the cleaning, regardless of chemicals that, I know that they've already run some tests, but hazardous material by a school to me just doesn't work. It really doesn't work.
I would ask you, what is your definition of hazardous material?
Anything that could, anything that would heat or anything, could blow up, anything that just, what to use to clean, and I know that they've gone, they've done some tests already that there's supposedly not any kind of chemicals that could harm anybody, but you research the company, not you, but the company itself, they've had several lawsuits against them for having hazardous whatever in their warehouse.
Each individual franchise is a business within itself. We are part of a franchise system.
Of a bigger company, right?
Exactly.
But I'm just telling you, the bigger company has several lawsuits against them for the same thing. I'm cleaning, I'm cleaning offices, cleaning everything, but still having problems throughout other areas.
I did bring a book with SDS sheets of the chemicals that we readily have on hand. I went over that with environmental, they have no issues. I do have an email confirming that they have no issues with it. Everything is in gallon jugs. We carry on average anywhere from three to five gallons of each. We do have a disinfectant that is in a 55 gallon drum. Because of COVID, we do use that quite often. I do have the SDS sheets on that, and when you look at the toxicity and everything, everything is at zero, so there's no concern with that. It's something, for instance, if you're talking about disinfectants, we do all the COVID cleanings and everything for the bridge systems for the government. As far as lawsuits that you're talking about, we're not involved in these, so I wouldn't be able to talk specifically in regards to that.
Also, for each franchise, it's its own separate entity, so we do not associate with other franchises. We don't know exactly what is it that they have, but we can share, we can give you a list of what is it that we have, and there has not been relations with that.
I do have, that's my concern, and especially by school. That's all I can say.
We have had a contract with LISD for mold remediation. I accidentally let it lapse two weeks ago, we're in the process of getting through that again. It will be due on Tuesday, so I'm the only one licensed for mold remediation in Laredo. I'm the only one licensed for mold assessment consultant in Laredo. It's public record, it's something you can easily look up as well. So, you know, if you do have concerns about LISD, they contracted us. So I would assume that they're okay with our processes and the chemicals we have on hand.
I have a question for staff. I know there's been an existing business there for over 12 years, and now Servpro wants to go in there. Hence is why we're doing a renewal of this, or the change of CUP. What was staff's research and what, how did y'all come to supporting this item?
Right, so when, initially when we first heard the name Servpro, I had staff do some research in other cities. We checked San Antonio, McAllen, Midland, Lubbock, San Marcos, San Antonio, and we found that those were in higher zone ranges, right, industrial areas. We brought in the applicant to talk about that. Apparently, there's different levels of Servpro that could be out there. So the next step we did was after that was we had him, we had the applicant visit with the fire department and also the health department to go over what they, what they're gonna be carrying in their facilities, just so that we could be clear of what they're gonna be carrying, whether they were gonna have big trucks, 18 wheeler trucks, or anything of that nature. And once we got clearance from environmental director, John Porter, that's when I made my decision of support, but I do understand the school issue. That's why we did a little extra homework to make sure that we're in compliance. The other thing we did was if you look at the sheet with the comments, I believe it was comment six?
Yes.
So if this business ends up growing, and they get into a situation where they're gonna start bringing in chemicals that we wouldn't want next to a school, we put in there that the CUP would be voided. And that could be a good thing, that could mean they're growing, they're getting bigger, or whatever. But for now, this is the, you know, we just, we checked with the different departments that handle these type of situations, and that was the response we got. My only question for you, Mr. Navarro, is in reading the packet that you guys sent, the previous, and nothing to do with Servpro, I think you guys do a great job in around doing the service that's needed, there's no doubt about that. But the previous person, as far as from what I saw, had seven citations. There was a lot of communication between planning department and legal department on issues that they were having with that person who was there. And one of the main things that I could, that I read on the packet you guys sent was that there was issues with parking 18 wheelers coming in to deliver, and actually, I guess not complying to the CUP, right? And it looked like it was a really, really hard time for the city to be able to put a grasp on that. And until then, I think that business continued, even with seven violations, from what I read, even from, I think, the citations where people were staying there after hours and drinking on the parking lot. Like Mr. Garcia just mentioned, it is a school next door, there are kids that walk to school, there is a track around the school as well. And off-street parking, and that's why I asked about parking, if there are living cars there, where are all those cars gonna park while they get in their trucks to go out and disinfect or do their job? And that's a big concern, especially we're considering the safety and the welfare of that area, right? So in the previous recommendation of the city had been not to approve, and now it is, but I think it's the same thing for this area. So the question is, how many CUPs have ever been revoked?
Overall, in general, or at this specific?
I'm just talking about in general.
I couldn't answer that right now, I'd have to do some research. I do know we have a process for that.
Right. And what would that process be? Because, again, and this is for legal, really, because from what I was seeing in the documentation, there were really, it was the city attorney was communicating with the planners, they were trying to get a hold of the citations.
Right.
And it just seems like they were going in circles. So how much did the city have, and I'm not saying anything about this business, I'm talking about the previous business. What controls did the city have in order to be able to revoke that? And I don't know how easy it is, and that's why I'm asking, how, how many times have we done this?
Right, as far as how many times have we revoked a CUP in general, I don't, I don't actually know.
And I would have to guess probably not that many, like.
Right, I don't think we do, we do have the ability to do it, but most of the time, people have worked hard for these things, and you know, if you tell them, hey, you're not in compliance with this and that, you know, they generally try and work with you to get back into compliance.
And unfortunately for this case, this previous owner was not in compliance, and there is previous history of that. And I would hate for the school specifically to have these issues with another business being there and just kicking the can down the street, right? But at the end of the day, I wanted to see what that process is. I don't know if you cite a person that's not in conformance, and then they go to municipal court, and then municipal court hears that, and can the city then cite continuously every day?
Generally, that's the process. You sort of establish, like, you give them an initial citation, you kind of work through that, depending on how responsive they are to your requests. Then, I mean, once you can establish a pattern of them not responding, or not complying with the CUP, you can go ahead and revoke it, and then I believe it's subject to an appeal process after that.
Right.
And that would be the general breakdown.
Right, and I think that's what this previous owner did, and I don't think that was ever revoked.
Right, yeah, I think that there is some room for, you know, if there's, especially if it goes over a long enough period of time, changes in administration, things like that.
Yeah.
It can get, you know, just kicked down the road, so to speak.
Okay, appreciate that.
Yeah, could you, real quick, even having number six in there, by the time the city figures it out or is caught, one of those containers can spill, and it's too late. And I personally don't want that on my, my backboard.
There's no need for us to have hazardous materials. There's nothing that we do within our line of business that requires for us to store or have hazardous materials. We actually go to houses, to commercial properties to clean, not the other way around.
Right, it's my concern, they put it on here, that means that there's this concern. If they're telling you, well, we're putting it on here because it's happened in the past. Not with you, maybe, but it's happened. That's that little piece that is not comfortable.
I think the comment is painting us with a broad stroke, and that's, I think, unfair. I do not want to carry hazardous materials on site. I don't want the liability, I don't want to have to pay for the insurance to carry it. I'm also licensed to jester, so I know the repercussions as far as, you know, legal liability, insurance, all that sort of thing. So I'm, you know, very much I'm aware of, you know, implications as far as what you carry, how you use it. I mean, during, case in point, during COVID, a lot of people, these online companies were using these chemicals that I wouldn't even touch, but they were using them. And then they were using them in warehouses. It's like, geez, I know that they use this, I see this here, I mean, that could kill people. I don't do that. I stay away, I'm very conscious of my people. Whenever you see my people in somewhere that, you know, I give them PPE, personal protection, protective equipment, I take care of my people. So if I take care of my people, I'm gonna take care of my neighbors. I'm the guy, you know, on the neighborhood, that's the quiet one that'll go and help you out. You know, I'm not gonna put anyone in jeopardy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question regarding the chemicals that environmental approved. Those are the only ones that they'll be able to use in?
As far as I know, that's what.
Yeah, that's what we typically have on hand. I have a binder, I think there's 28 or 30 of them. They went through them, they had no issues at the time. I have an email stating the same. If we need something job-specific, I call and I have it delivered to the job site. That rarely, that rarely does happen. And if there's anything hazardous, I sub it out, or I call someone that is licensed to do that. As far as pick up on-site somewhere else, I don't mess with it.
But is that part of the staff approval, based on only those chemicals that are approved by environmental?
That's right.
I believe.
Is that it for commission?
I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question for Mr. and Mrs. Worshing. Well, first of all, I wanna say that it looks like you've really done your homework, gone through the process, and our responsible business owners, and our staff is saying you don't have any hazardous materials, you're saying you don't plan to have any. So I thank you for that. But I'm just curious, generally, since I didn't see any information on that here, if you can tell us about your waste removal process? So the materials or liquids you use to sanitize, how do you dispose of them so that we can avoid them being exposed to the kids?
Any chemical that we use for cleaning can be put down in sanitary sewer.
Okay.
If we need to. If not, if it's anything, if there is anything, for instance, on, say, mold removal, we're just using cleaning products that you typically find, of course, something specific for a fungicide, let's say. However, we use, you know, rags, we use some abrasives, those can be thrown in the trash. There's nothing that would need special handling that we do on a daily basis. I do not do asbestos removal, I don't touch that, so we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be any of our concern. If there is something that we find, we, for instance, on any commercial job site, it is state law that before you disturb anything that has asbestos containment materials, we have to test for it. I called upon our engineering out there before, and they can attest to that. Like, I, you know, I follow everything as far as the way it should be handled, as per state law and EPA law as well. All the chemicals that we use, there's a label, you have to follow the label. If you go off-label, technically you're breaking the laws per EPA. We do not do that.
Thank you. I guess my question is more around, like, saying after hours, if there are kids in the area, and they see maybe materials in your trash bin, or, like, what is your process on-site to get rid of those materials, and are they, is the trash accessible to people?
So typically, if there is any debris that is generated from, let's say, a water restoration project, we will be pulling baseboards, we will be ventilating walls, which is just drywall dust. So if you're concerned about any type of hazardous debris, there wouldn't be any. There is just something that you would find out in your normal trash, or, you know, let's say dumpster for remodel. At the very most, that would be the worst of it. As far as on that particular side of Ash Street, it is all fenced in. We would have a dumpster, so it would go in the dumpster, but it is all fenced in within the property.
Okay, yeah, I would encourage you to keep it secure, just for the sake of, you know, kids getting into the trash.
That's understood, yeah. No, we keep everything secure, vehicles be secure. I may, there, I protect the interest of the business, us and our employees, as best as I can.
Thank you, sir.
And I know on your website, you mentioned biohazard and crime scene cleanup as a service that you may provide. What would be that type of scenario that you would have to do something like that, or a service?
Typically, we use, there are some chemicals that break down blood, it's kind of like, I can't think of the word.
And it mentions virus and pathogen.
Yeah, there's a chemical that breaks down blood. And essentially, at that point, once it's broken down, it's been disinfected, and all the chemicals, all these properties that make it, blood are at that point broken down. It's, I can't think of the word. And it, a lot of times, you can even, on the, what's the one I have in the ground?
Hydroxy peroxide?
I'm sorry? Hydroxy peroxide, yeah. I mean, a lot of times, that does most of the work for you. And it's, once it's there, of course, you do have, you do have, there is a difference in the state between medical waste and human, and let's say biohazard waste, if that's what you're getting at. Of course, you do have the red bag, if any, you can call a company like, say, Stericycle or something like that, they'll come and they'll dispose of it properly at that point in time.
Right, like, that biohazard waste wouldn't go into the city's landfill?
No. But I mean, oh, no.
They would, some, a commercial business would come and pick?
Yes.
That, if that's there?
Yes, if that's there, if it's necessary at that point in time. We do not remove any body parts or anything of that.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
If that's your, that's your concern, then I'll.
And again, I would like to say, it's a great service, Servpro does, I think it's well needed in this community. I think, you guys probably the only ones that probably do this, you know, it's, it's, like they mentioned, you know, the concern is the school site, and I'm sure when you looked at your property, you had to have noticed, you know, that school across the street, so that's why there's some concern.
And regards to biohazard, I think generally speaking of CAT 3 or black water, reverse flow, basically, for lack of a better term, something that comes out of the toilet that ain't yours, that's generally what we refer to with biohazard.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more further questions, I'm gonna move on. Thank you so much, your time. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak against this item, please come forward.
Can staff do me a favor? Can you guys pull up the aerial of the property?
Yes, my name is Olivia Gonzalez. We live in 2603 Fitzmont Camay, which is right, almost smack, but the other, the others, the next street down. And I just feel like, where is deja vu here again? We were here many years ago with this same problem. And I know that the representative that we had threw us under the bus. Of course, he got indicted, but he came around asking for permission, for, not permission, because I said, I know that you have those people in your pocket, and he laughed, and he left. And he never paid attention to us. So again, now we have another company, and I don't care if they say it's not hazardous, it's chemical. It's chemical, and it only takes a little bit. I am a retired school nurse from North Harris County, and I know that the stuff that went on in Shadow View, they, and all their explosions and the fires, we all got it way in the north. So I know what environmental hazard does to our children. I don't know if you know how the wind goes here in Laredo, but it doesn't, when it comes from the south, it doesn't go to the north. It curves. Where is this thing located? In a curve right up to Milton, one of our highest performing elementary schools. Our children love to be outside, so I know what can happen to those children. And I realize that all it takes is a little accident. And you're putting the health of our children, their futures, and their lives. This is the future of Laredo that you're looking at. We have an elementary school right the next block. This is a community, and we have a lot of children. And a lot of people that walk in the evening. So I wish you do consider, because it's chemical, no matter if it's a gallon, a pint, or whatever, Laredo is hot, I don't know if that warehouse is air-conditioned, I know they weren't, because we even had rats coming out of those. And you know what those people did? They brought cats. Our cat population exploded. And why? Because they had rats. And now we have, now you want chemicals. Where is it gonna stop? Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak against this item?
Hello, good evening. My name is Geraldine Botelho. I'm an educator, and I have a property in front of this warehouse. It's a house. And we've been there since nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-four. When we purchased that property, we did, had the warehouse empty. Along the way, they started to rent it to so many different renters, until the eighteen-wheelers that you're mentioning came about. And we said, okay, what's going on? Where is the city ordinance around that time? So we started to confront people. It got very nasty, because all the renters, of course, they're gonna come after us because we live in front of this house. Our safety was, you know, we had to confront them. You know, we have to tell them, you know, we don't, we don't, you all cannot do this at this area. We have kids walking. The sidewalks are very limited around that area. But that's the history of this warehouse. And like Mr. Maro, um, I'm sorry, Mike Barone, is mentioning, there is a history. There is cup history. We do have all those documentations that they keep, they, every owner or every renter keeps applying for a cup, and they keep granting these cups. Safety, like they mentioned the dumpsters, that was the major issue in our area. Every time that the dumpsters came in, all the debris would come to our house. Their cars, inside the house, inside the, the cars, we would see all the dust in there. That's how bad it was. Even if it's fenced, right now, they already mentioned, and I hope y'all picked it up, they're gonna be disposing in those dumpsters. But how are they gonna be dumped? That is my question. How are you gonna dump all these chemicals that have been used to apply for COVID or any asbestos or anything that you're treating? You're gonna dump it there. Kids are gonna be walking. They're gonna smell it. They don't have the protective gear in there with them. They do. Their employees do. Unless they're gonna be transferring all of this. But as of what I saw on their commercials and on the website, all of them are wearing protective gear. Why? And then you're gonna dump it? So I am against it. Like I have, you know, since nineteen eighty-four, we've been trying to correct this with the city. It hasn't been able to be corrected, because this warehouse was grandfathered in a long time ago. But now it's a residential area. If you all keep granting the cup, we're never gonna shut this down. We're gonna continue. You're gonna continue hurting people, innocent people. There's a playground. Next, it's a very low social economic area. Why? Why are we, I don't know, I just don't understand. You know, it is very hard for us to come back. I was in shock when we received the letter. I hope you all do the, the best thing, you know, the citizens and the elderly that are here. We need to have a consideration. This warehouse for this business is awesome, but not in a residential area next to a school. They can find a better location, appropriate for their business. I teach students with special needs. I teach them chemicals. Even just Lysol, read the label. Any basic household chemicals has hazardous, um, things that can hurt you, even if it's from Walmart. So please consider denying this cup. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anybody has anything different to say that's against this item?
Yes, my name is Ruben Gonzalez. My address is ninety-two twenty-six, I'm sorry, twenty-six oh-three East Montgomery. I worked for the school, I retired for the school, this is in Houston. I was in charge of the schools. And any school, it's two hundred and eighty-three buildings in Houston, in H I D. Not in a single school have a chemical or some company across. I deal a lot when a company name Service Master. Because when we can, when a building catch on fire, we call Service Masters. They come and clean or, or water damage. And they use a lot of chemicals to take the smoke out or whatever. You know, they, they real, I don't know if these people do that kind of job. Or if they, they certified to work with asbestos, it's worse. Because Service Masters, they used to be, sometimes you go, they have a pipe busted, you start working the pipe and you find out, oh, it's covered with asbestos. So who, who would take care of that? The same company or they will call somebody else? And a lot of the time, the companies, they say, hey, we, we take care of the whole thing. So my main, my main question is how far they can go when, when cleaning. They take damage, like a, a building is damaged, a fire, a fire, catch a fire, and they go and clean the building? Because you can find a lot of thing when you go that way. Now, you could clean the floor, it's a whole different ball. That's all, that's all I wanna know if they do. And, and another question is, what they could do with all the trash, all the liquids they left? Because things could be left always. They go dump it in the, in the sewer, or they go, what they could do? They don't go drink it, they chew it. So that's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
For all of the others, I live in the, in the area too. If they don't have anything hazardous, or they don't handle anything hazardous, then what is the need for their employees to wear PPE equipment? That's one question. Another one is the parking. There's no parking. Now, if to deliver supplies to, to the business, they, they used to park in the street. We have kids walking to school. There's no sidewalks there. They use the street. It's another thing. Right now, I believe it's an R-one. You wanna make a jump, not even from an R-one to an R-two to an R-three. You wanna go straight to, give them a jump couple of goals. I think that's a little bit, you know, think, think about that before you do anything else. Also, how many times do we have to say here, no? Like, when somebody runs for office, you know, campaign funds or whatever, you know, say no every yearly, with two years, three years, and I don't know. Also, La Bota had, residents had the same issue on April twenty-nineteen. And they live, and this business was blocks miles away, and they had to evacuate Mulder Elementary. And they were miles away. Now, we're talking about half a block away. I want you to take this consideration. If anything happens, if you grant this permission in the zone, anything happens to the kids or any matter from my family or anybody around it, I wanna held the, have it in record that I wanna held the, see Laredo responsible for anything bad that happened in that area. While if you granted it or not, think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from staff before our closed public hearing? For our permission?
Um, just discussion, or I don't know if Mr. Tejina wants to, I'll let him talk and then discussion.
So to address some of their concerns, again, they use twenty-eight, uh, cleaning materials. Basically, anything you would find under kitchen sink. Mr. Worshing met with Captain Arredondo. He referred us to the environmental department. They reviewed it, and they cleared everything. I would like to read you.
Uh, excuse me, just really quick. I know there was already a public hearing for and against. So if we're gonna let Mr. Tejina speak, are we gonna allow the people against to speak after he's spoken?
Can you, I know there was a few questions that, that, one of the, one of the people came up with as far as, they asked about the, the disposal and, and so forth. So basically, if you can just address as far as, again, that how the chemicals are handled, disposal, then we can pretty much go from there.
As far as chemical handling, we follow the EPA, the label on it. Per EPA law, we have to. There's no off-label use. As far as disposal, any of the chemicals we use are basically household cleaning chemicals. Most of them you can find under kitchen sinks. They're just labeled surfro, whatever it may be. Those, anything as far as disposal, it can be put down in sanitary sewer. As far as children, my son is at the warehouse all the time. He's nine. I have no issues with him exploring the warehouse, because I am not concerned with anything that we have on site. As far as PPE, no, there's no reason for any employee to be wearing PPE, which is the full white Tyvek suits, at the warehouse. If we are wearing them, for instance, we recently had a mold job at one of the universities here. On site there, yes, they will be wearing PPE. But that area is in full containment under negative pressure. So, and that, and that is for the specific reason of mold remediation. Outside of that, there is no reason for anyone to be wearing any PPE. If you're talking about the bridge systems, we wear PPE for COVID cleaning to protect my employees from COVID. Under COVID, we, no one in my office got sick until maybe a year ago. And that's when everyone kind of left us. So I prided myself on that, because I took very good care of my employees against something that no one could see.
Thank you.
As far as disposal, I mean, everything is bagged onsite. If we're working in a particular room of, let's say, it's a house, warehouse, commercial building, whatever it may be, we're working in a specific area, everything will be bagged onsite, because it's counterproductive for us to be taking torn drywall and dragging it through a house. We have to clean the rest of the house. So everything is bagged onsite, and usually, I think it's dug, built, tied, so that there will be nothing that comes out of it. And then, of course, it's disposed of that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, there was a comment about asbestos again. They are not in the asbestos remediation business. They don't touch it whatsoever.
Thank you.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, before I make a motion, just to let the public know that whatever, whatever decisions made here, commission, is just a recommendation. Um, from our recommendation goes to city council, and city council has the ultimate decision at the end. So our decision here is just a recommendation. So just to let you all know that basically that's what's gonna happen here. We, we, we've closed public hearing, and I think we're ready to, to make a motion.
I'm just saying, like, delivery for the supplies, how they gonna deliver? There's no parking, there's no way. H E B, when the H E B delivers something, they go inside their property. Strikes, they're down the corner. The eighteen-wheeler comes in, deliver, they go inside the property. How would their supplies would be delivered? Are they gonna park outside in the street? Because that's what they did with the other company that was there, you know, and kids pass through there, eighteen-wheelers on the street. Now, I mean, if we're gonna be having this issue about parking, uh, that's one of the main issues. Now, as for the chemicals under the sink, I mean, how many kids, how many people here will let their kids under the sink? Now.
Thank you, sir. We understand. Thank you. I'm ready to adjourn your motion.
A motion to close public hearing?
Motion to not support.
Wait, we have, hello. Oh, to close and then discussion? Yeah, close public hearing, then have discussion? Second.
All in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries.
Uh, just really quick with staff. What, what was this use classified as under the permitted uses of the land development code?
Low-density residential, right?
As far as, you know how there's a chart that we have to consider as far as a business to be able to determine what zoning this business needed?
The permitted land uses?
Yes.
That chart, right? Um, we got classified under like a cleaning service.
Because I looked and I couldn't find anything under, under cleaning service. So the closest thing I could find under the land use chart, Mr. Navarro, is a warehouse, a warehouse use. Because it is, if you pull up the aerial, um, you can see that the offices and then it's a, it's a warehouse. It's a huge warehouse. So under a warehouse use, if it's classified as a warehouse, as we can see there, what is needed for a warehouse is a B-four use. So if a B-four use is needed, and the only, and this is in a residential R-one lot, the only thing it can go to is a B-one, like use, is what I'm saying. So the only use you could use is a B-one use here. And if this is a warehouse, it needs a B-four. So I don't even think we should be considering this. And I wanted to ask legal if that's, if that's right, then under the condition of use permit, uh, rules, right? Uh, in the land use, it specifically states, if you're in a residential area, the highest zone you can apply for, for condition use permit is a B-one use. That's correct.
Right, that's correct. I believe the determination as far as the, the type of business, that was on, on staff's side, and I think they've determined it was, was the determination.
B-one. For, uh, what we're looking at here is, what exactly are they gonna be doing there? The same, it'd be the equivalent of, we're looking at like ambulance service. They bring their vehicles, they park them here, they, they're. But that's not what they're applying for, they're, it's a warehouse. So I don't even feel comfortable taking action on this. At this time, if it's, if it's, it's a warehouse to store things, like they're gonna store their cars, like they just mentioned, like it mentions in their communication that it's a warehouse, then it requires a B-four use. So I would consider highly that staff considers that they come back, apply for a B-one, and then be okay to apply for the CUP for the B-four use, rather than granting something that I don't think qualifies if this building that we're looking at is a warehouse, no matter it's ambulance service or anything else, I don't, um, to require a, a, a B-one use. That, that's my point.
After reviewing the case, I determined that it'd be a B-one use. And that's why allowed for the.
Can you please show me the land use chart where, where it states a cleaning service?
Well, if you don't have the, the, a line, you have to look at it as what are they gonna do? So we had to call in the applicant, so we could make sure exactly what they're gonna do. They're not gonna ma, manufacture anything. They're, they're using it as more of a parking lot in order to dispatch. I believe they also dispatch by an eight-hundred number that calls in, and then they know where they're gonna go the next day. So there's no fabricating in here, and there's no storage, uh, other than the cars and just like an ambulance, like an ambulance.
The chemicals they just mentioned, surely that they're gonna store a one-gallon cleaner?
Well, you'd have the same thing if you had an ambulance service that are, that's staying here. They would have chemicals too, right? But they're, but they're parked there.
But this is not an ambulance service.
No, no, but when you're looking at, when you ask me, how do I determine? I have to look at it from, okay, what is it that they're gonna do? Okay, so they're gonna park the cars there.
And what they're gonna do is a cleaning service.
The work is not here.
And a cleaning service is not found in the land use chart. And if legal can let us know that it is, then let us know. Other than that, I would ask legal if this is a warehouse, and if it is, it requires a B-four use, not a B-one use. And we cannot grant to C U, I don't feel comfortable granting a CUP on something that requires a B-four. That's my only thing. So I would really, we can take a motion on however you require it, Mr. Navarro, but I'm just letting this commission recognize that this is a warehouse and it requires a B-four, and it's here for a CUP for, I don't know, it's not in the land use chart, so it's a B-one. So that's another thing that we have to really consider, consider. And I would ask legal to consider that too, before we take action.
Yeah, from a legal perspective, the determination as far as the use is, is with staff. And so then you're free to make your motion, depending on, on how you, how appropriate you feel that is or the recommendation that you feel should go to council.
Right.
I make a motion to not support this item.
Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Garcia, to not support staff recommendation for the approval of the CUP. And we have a second by Commissioner Barone. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion, we have two against?
One against.
One against?
I'm, I'm for.
Okay.
Four, one.
Motion carries. Moving on to consideration of the following preliminary plaits and preliminary replats. Item seven A, preliminary consideration of the plat, of Pinnacle Center FM fourteen seventy-two, unit seven. The tent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is FM fourteen seventy-two Investments. Engineer is Gilton Engineering Company. They propose use as industrial, and the zoning for this five-lot development is M-one. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning. Fire. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. Does the applicant or engineer record here to speak?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kirk Cross. I'm the Pinnacle Industry Center, and I'm here in support of this motion. I'm the Pinnacle Industry Center, and I'm here in support of this motion. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Do you concur with all the comments? Do you concur with all the comments listed here? You're, you're okay with all the comments?
I'm sorry.
Are you, are you okay with all the comments listed here? You concur with all the comments? You're okay with the comments?
Uh, yes.
Mic issue, yeah.
It's my ears.
Oh, but the microphone's not working? You can't hear?
Okay. Soft voice.
Are there any questions or comments from the commission? If not, what sort of action would you like to take?
Motion to approve the recommendation.
We have a motion to approve, subject to the following comments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barone. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seven B. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Lot thirty-five East Rancho Benitas, West Unit Seven. The intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is Alberto Esteban Ortiz. Engineer is Alfredo Guerra, Guerra Engineering. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one-lot development is not applicable as this track is within the E T J. Location view. Area view. Street view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. Is the engineer record applicant here? What sort of action would the commission like to take on this one?
Subject to the comments?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving on to item seven C. Preliminary consideration of the plat of I P B Boomtown. The tent is industrial, commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm sorry, um, applicant is Garcia Iris Investment Group. Engineer is Daniel Gomez. Proposed use is industrial, commercial. The zoning for this one-lot development is M-one. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Good evening, I'm Daniel Gomez, and we concur with the comments.
What sort of action would the commission like to take?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, what does I P B stand for?
Just the name.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Industrial property.
Okay, thank you.
Not just the name that was given to the plat, that's just, right, I mean, sign, that's just the name that was given to the plat.
Can I have a motion from the commission?
Make a motion to approve, subject to the comments?
Do you have a motion by Commissioner Rankin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Abstained.
Oh, you abstained?
Yeah.
One abstention. Commissioner Garcia. Moving on to item seven D. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Lomas del Sur, Unit fourteen. The intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is A L S Laredo Holdings. Engineer is Jerkson Engineering. Proposed use is commercial, and the zoning for this one-lot development is R-one A. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Thank you. Does engineer or applicant here?
Good evening. I'm, uh, Ken Dirksen, uh, Dirksen Engineering. Actually, I'm the surveyor. The engineer is, um, very engineering, and, but I'm here representing the project.
Do you concur with the comments?
Yes, sir.
There's no questions from Commissioner Staff? Can I have a motion?
Motion to-
We have a motion to approve, subject to comments by Commissioner Garcia?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rankin. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to consideration of model subdivision rules and compliance. Uh, can I have a motion to hear items nine A, B, and C together?
Make a motion to hear items A, B, and C all together? Second.
Correction, nine, right? Nine A, B, and C?
Nine A, B, and C.
We have a, uh, motion by Commissioner Rankin, and a second by Commissioner Barone. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion of action for items nine A, B, and C?
Motion to approve A, B, and C.
Have a motion to approve, um, items nine A, B, and C by Commissioner Garcia?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Portillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Do we have any directors' comments?
We need to read those now.
Oh, I'm sorry, can we read these into record? Thank you.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, for the record, uh, the consideration of model subdivision